Who drew that up? I did. You see on the back, it says prepared by Sally Riley. No, no. That, yeah, that was just Michael Lawson asked me to put together, identify the problem.
So does this sort of summarize his comments?
Or is it? Summarize.
It's your, it's yours.
It's mine that he could. The city manager had a little bit of background information. So I'll explain where we are with that. John, you can probably start the work session. Everybody's ready. Do have one attendee who is the Courier's reporter, Norma, Norma Engelberg.
Well, let's start the meeting. Work session.
Yes.
I was almost going to read Laura Pellegrini's information.
You can just start the meeting and then hopefully we can be done with the work session.
This is a work session. And item A is envisioned Woodland Park to 2030 final review and edits.
So earlier this week, you picked up your revised copy. And this copy has your prior work sessions, the four work sessions that you worked through each of the chapters. And your edits are in red. So as you read through this, if you have any other minor tweaks to the comp plan, please email those to me and to Christie or email them, yes, to me and Christie. And then we'll summarize those and send them out to everybody. The goal is that.
Useful to CC other members. Would you like?
Yeah.
I'd be interested in CCing other people's too to help me with comments. So that's all right.
I think, I think that's all right as long as we're.
Just the six of us, I'm not talking about along chain.
Let me check with our city attorney because when there are, if it's just factual information that these are my comments, then it's okay. But if we get into a dialogue about them, then we may be in violation of the open meeting slot. Yeah. Yeah.
Well, maybe it would be best for you just to go ahead and edit or consolidate and say this is the comments.
Compile them and then, yes. Yeah. Why don't we do that?
So if I just can interrupt, make sure you speak into your mic.
Oh, thank, thank you. So, so any minor tweaks, if you can just email those to me, I will compile them. And if you can do that by the 29th, next Wednesday, that would be helpful. Okay. So that gives you a little bit less than a week by the end of the day on Wednesday. So I have Thursday to be able to compile them, get them out to everyone. And then the timeline is that if there are no major concerns that you all have, then we'll make those edits. And then Logan Simpson is going to prepare the final, final document. And that is going to be ready on October 7th. And that is one week before the October 14th Planning Commission meeting. And the thought is that we will have the joint resolution prepared and have a public hearing for the Planning Commission to adopt the comprehensive plan. And then at the next meeting of the City Council, they will adopt, endorse the joint resolution and the comprehensive plan.
Raise your hands, say, this is the truth.
We'll, we'll see, we'll hope that we get at least a majority of the council endorsing it. Be nice to have entire unanimous support, but.
When is our outside editor? Sounds like he's going to get it after the final, final, which means.
No, he, he is looking at this draft. Yes. He, so we have Charlie Schrader, who is doing a thorough brush through for consistency and formatting and grammar, all of that. And so this evening, what I'd like to do is just highlight, I've, I've marked about eight different areas that I just wanted to call your attention to that I, I want updated or edited or, and other edits that we've received from a couple of the subcommittees or individuals.
So Sally, just, I'm sorry, what was the date of the City Council hearing?
Laura, I almost have to look at a calendar. It's after the 14th. It's probably the first meeting in November, whatever that first Thursday is.
Okay. And then, uh, did you want the planning commissioners to attend it? Is it a public hearing?
Yes, it, it will be under probably new business for the council. It's a resolution, the joint resolution. And I'll prepare that will be very similar to the one from 10 years ago. And I'll send that out to all of you too, so that you'll see that. And whatever the first meeting in November is. Okay.
Sally, do you expect to have any other items on the agenda on the 13th?
On the 14th, we do, we have a flood hazard development permit, but should be fairly simple.
The reason I was asking is because we have just a short period of time, a short period of time between the time the final, final copy is available and we have a public hearing. And I was just wondering, what, what, what methods are we going to be using to inform the public that there is a copy they can review?
We can highlight it on our website and let them know that the public hearing is going to happen on October 14th and the final, final will be available a week before.
Is, is there any possibility of getting with maybe even the Courier? And saying we have a carrying a scheduled public hearing, maybe do a press release.
That's certainly possible. Actually, Norma has done a super job of covering your workshops. So the, you know, the newspaper articles have been fairly robust. And yet we don't have a lot of participation. And when we posted it on the internet prior to the work sessions, we had about four people make comments.
Okay.
So with that timeline, I just wanted to, first of all, and I'm glad Don DeZellem is here. The first comment I had was on page four, which is what is the envisioned Woodland Park 2030 comprehensive plan? Laura, I can share my screen and go through the plan.
What did you want to emphasize?
Just that Mr. DeZellem and Councilmember Zoolaga had suggested a few tweaks to this area that basically emphasizes the aspirational content of the, the document. And I handed out to all of you their two paragraphs that they would like to modify. And so it has to do with these sections. Yeah, I'll zoom in a little bit more so you can see a little better on the screens. It, it removes the word blueprint for development and basically says is an aspirational community guide.
Are you in the first paragraph or second?
First paragraph.
Okay.
Right here. And with, which helps with prioritizing city actions, allocation of resources and encourage partnerships to address community challenges. It will focus on the physical, social, economic development and to aid in the developing, in developing policies regarding the city budget and capital improvement projects. So that's the way this first paragraph would read. If, if you're in agreement to make that modification.
What do you think?
It's fairly benign.
Probably not going to go for it anyway, so what?
Well, I'm hoping that with these minor tweaks, we will have support from Councilmembers who will.
That's a good point.
Let's just make it an aspirational blueprint. That's all it is.
Well, I think they'd like to just eliminate the word blueprint.
Who is that?
Mr. DeZellem and Mr. Zoolaga.
Why?
And we can ask Mr. DeZellem.
Why?
The big thing is that by stressing the point as aspirational, it eliminates what you like, it's a policy. The document is an aspirational document. It's not a policy made.
It's always been that way.
Right. I think you'll get more support out of the council, at least a couple of the council members by making that slight tweak.
And I don't think we lose anything with this rewording.
When I reworded it, I tried to keep the original intent while making it friendly to several councilmembers.
I, I just have a, I, I think it, it sounds fine and the way you tweaked it, although it's interesting, the words that pop out to me, if you're just listening to it, not, you know, economic development, aid developing. I, I think it sounds like aid to developing countries. Yeah. You know, just the wording and the words that pop out to me, but that is definitely not the intent.
You've identified grammatically challenge, actually, in the way in structure. It's not, it's non-parallel, but.
I was going to say too, and I was working off of a previous version, not the version that Sally ended up working off of.
Yeah.
If it's not a blueprint, what is it?
An aspirational community guided vision.
Yes. Yeah. Oh, okay.
If it's not, what kind of document is it? We know that. I don't mean that. That's not what you're saying.
Right.
It's a community guided vision. And that's solid.
So if you got rid of blueprint for development, said the comprehensive plan is a community guide and vision for the future of Woodland Park.
With, with the word aspirational in front of that. So the first sentence reads.
Got you.
First sentence reads the envisioned Woodland Park 2030 comprehensive plan. The plan is Woodland Park's aspirational a dash, a community guided vision for the future.
That sounds good. That sounds good.
But Lee wants it.
Read the sentence again. It sounded like you said is Woodland Park's aspirational.
Aspirational. Community guided vision.
Okay, well, yeah, if it's aspirational common, community guided vision.
Yes. Got it. I needed the comma. Okay, next.
The second sentence, it helps with prioritizing city actions, allocation of resources, what, and encouragement of partnerships. I'm trying to get just parallel structure here and similarly, there's similar problem in the next sentence. Encouragement of partnerships.
Encourages. Says encourage partnerships to address community challenges.
Yeah, but it's prioritizing city actions, allocation of resources and provide partnerships.
Yeah, the partnership.
It would be, yeah, so it'd be encouragement.
Yes.
Of partnerships or something like that.
Or encourages partnerships. Yep. And that's because Don didn't have the, this newer copy.
Sure. And the next sentence, it will touch on physical, social and economic development and aid in developing policy. It could be and aid in, subject to some better wording to address Ellen's further comment, but we're two. Maybe we haven't.
Just eliminate that. Okay.
Getting back to what Don said, when you say to prioritize, prioritize city actions, is that too strong?
No. No, because when you look at your tool, especially like last meeting where you were talking about, well, we can't force them to do the budget, but this will help them prioritize me how they do their budget. So I think prioritize is, is a good word that can stay in there. I don't think it's too strong.
Everybody agree with that? Okay.
And then the next recommendation is to tweak, who is the comprehensive plan designed for? And because we had, the Planning Commission had redlined this section pretty well, or pretty extensively. I asked Don if he could live with the, all the first part of this paragraph. And then this last sentence could be modified to read, the plan is an aspirational aid to assist city staff, the Planning Commission and City Council regarding takeout to make decisions. And primarily designed.
Yes, was the second sentence objectionable or did that just get dropped in the shuffle?
He's okay with.
You see, the second sentence is just omitted. Said, while the plan looks forward 20 years, an update is contemplated every 10 years. We'll have residents, leaders and business owners to recalibrate, make adjustments based on current conditions.
That's one of the things.
That's, that's in there.
Okay, so that's, even though it's not on the edit.
Yeah. It's in there. So I think we're good with that as well. Okay. So the next tab I have that I just wanted to review is page 17, which is just to show Ellen that the graph has a little person with the dog.
Are you suggesting that 65 to 74 people walk dogs and people over 75 have a cane? See, I think that's, that's, that's age, that's age discrimination.
Well, we're trying to avoid that. And then I just want to call your attention.
It's a gal with a cane.
Yes, it's a lady with a cane who tends to outlive. I also wanted to mention the population trends. Christie has updated all of the population numbers based on the census. And the 2020 census originally came out with a number or the state demographer with a little bit less than the 8,151. So I, I was pleased to see that the accepted numbers now show our population. We grew more than 700 people. It's more like a thousand people in the last decade. The other thing that was interesting, which doesn't show on this chart, but it's in another table, is that our number of persons per household has continued to go down. So we're now at 2.22 people per household, which is down from 2.47. And, yes, and when I started in the planning department in the 90s, it was 2.67. So we continue to have smaller households. Which, yeah.
I still would see, see if she's got a younger looking 64, 75. The woman's got a bad back. She's got a hair up in a bun. And she's got, now that's not fair.
Okay.
Tell her to see what kind of icon she's got.
I'm gonna write Ellen here.
Okay. Next, next comment, I'd like to just draw your attention to, is the future land use map? So I do have a much, we are on page 22. They have made quite a few changes to this after staff's review and some input from Larry and from Lee. So we got those two items corrected. And if you'd like to informally look at the larger copy of the map, I do have that available for you. If you'd like to look at that.
Yes, please.
Okay. We'll let you.
Let me go over there and look at it.
No, you can take it home.
Oh, take it home.
Yep.
Well, the concern I had with this map and yeah, is, is that we have yellow for single family.
Yes.
And we also have Taylor County, El Paso County's rural residential. And the rural residential appears within City Woodland Park when you look at the, the map here.
Yes.
So that was a major error.
Uh, look at my pointer. Do you mean in this area, the paint pony area?
No. The area just north of, of downtown is a lighter yellow than some of the, that's yellow that matches the Taylor County designation.
Here's the problem is that at that small scale, the roads are white. So they, it looks like it's a lighter cream color.
A different color.
What we could do is make the yellow in the city limits a little bit brighter.
Yes.
And then it will pop out.
Good idea.
See how it's even brighter over here? That's because the roads are white.
Not enough contrast for all the box.
And it blends.
Okay, that'll work.
Okay.
What if you put, what if you put the blocks or something in black or dark blue? So they at least highlight, you know? Because make that all dark won't look nice.
We'll ask, we'll ask Christie how to make, make sure there's better consistency there.
The white just goes away.
Yeah. Okay.
One question before you move on.
Yes.
When you flip this over, some of these pictures are faded. That's not going to be that way, is it?
Those are the beginning of each chapter.
Why are they faded? Aren't they nice bright pictures?
Well, we could have them take the.
It almost looks like it's a mistake. Something just washed out.
It's kind of a, let me get to the front cover. Okay. It's kind of a graphic technique that people use, but if, if the group and then.
The pictures are beautiful and stuff.
If you'd like, we can take the shading off. Like that, try, see what it looks like.
I think it's fine with it this way because it's.
I don't see it as a technique.
It's meant to be just a wider page. The emphasis is on number five, city finance.
The yours is together.
Yeah, kept in the character.
Together makes sense.
Yeah.
But together it's darker. But these are two pages per sheet.
Okay. Right. So. So, so the, you know, real document will look like this and it's really just a divider to begin the chapter.
Your call, John.
Your call, John.
Whoever loses this is got to buy the other person dinner. Depends how many complaints you've got. If it's a technique, I've never seen a technique.
Here's one on chapter four. They actually have it as a bright picture.
It has got normal color.
Yes, so they didn't put the shading. Let me advance to chapter four and we can see that. So maybe it is better, there's the opposite, they didn't shade.
They can use more of a contrasting thing or something like that. It just looks faded out that stuff.
Let me, let me ask them.
Okay.
I think it's, it's a good call. Cause I do think the, the photographs are really say.
Oh, they are.
And, and they did improve a lot of the photographs after we gave them some more choices.
Did notice that they did remove the non-Woodland Park photos.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes. Okay. And then the housing chapter, I just wanted to share with, with you all our long discussion about adding affordable, attainable and affordable.
Page are you on? 31.
30.
Okay.
31, yes, thanks, Larry. So, and then there is the affordable housing definition is generally defined as housing on which the occupant is paying no more than 30% of gross income for housing costs, including utilities.
And I appreciate we have both attainable and affordable.
Yeah. Really good.
Do, do we express some view on the desirability or lack of desirability or lack of interest or great interest or whatever in this? Is it under our calls?
You know, we did talk about adding one sentence that said, and Woodland Park where feasible supports affordable housing, attainable and affordable housing. So I think that's, is that in there? I don't think it is.
I don't think you need it. I think it says it well. The interesting thing though, because this is median household. This is an average. This means 50% or above that and 50% or below. See, that's how I know median.
That's right. And median.
Total different look than average.
Right. And median is a better indicator of the cost of housing.
Okay.
Cause you get skewed if you take an average with very low and very high. So that's why you use median.
Thank you.
I did take statistics.
Sort that you just indicated.
And that was our discussion at the last work session was to add that sentence or something to that effect.
Who added as a housing action?
No, just a statement that the city supports affordable and affordable housing.
And, and where, where feasible.
Where applicable.
Yeah.
As, as feasible. That was to help with possibility of future funding.
Right.
Which we, I think we.
Yeah. That's right.
Okay.
You're right. It doesn't do anything bad either.
Nope.
And gives us some leverage for grants.
Absolutely. Okay, good catch. Okay. Moving to my next tab is going to be quite a ways in. Is going to be quite a ways in. Oh, yes, um in chapter seven, uh the sustain sustainability. Um, we are going to be on page sixty two. Sorry, sixty. Page sixty. I just want to show you how the civic sustainability goal fit into this chapter. So when you read through it, you'll see how that complements the rest of the good governance piece here.
I have a suggestion. Continue to offer the Woodland Park Citizens a candidate, great. Encourage everyone run for office to participate. And I would like to say all citizens in Woodland Park should attend this if they're interested, something to that effect. Not just people that are politicians.
Encourage interested citizens to participate.
Interested citizens of our community to to attend, something like that.
Yeah, there's above this is a whole bunch of volunteer and public participation actions. There are four of them there. So it might be a little bit redundant.
Just eliminate the sentence, second one. Just get rid of it, still does the same thing.
Which sentence?
Don't want to encourage them to participate? No, she said it's redundant from up here.
No, she said that offering it to the citizens at at large would be redundant to what was above. It wasn't redundant regarding the um candidates for office. I think I'd like to keep that sentence. Continue to offer Woodland Park. To encourage, encourage all citizens, particularly those running for office to participate.
What's that?
Encourage all citizens, comma, particularly those running for office, comma, to participate.
Sure.
That works.
That's fine, that does it.
Okay, perfect. All right, so and those are. Four action items under that new section or that section that got moved into sustainability. Then I'm going to jump to page ninety five. Would be in the transportation section. The map that we're using here. Christie and I. Is to show the functional classifications of our streets. And this is not accurate. We act, we actually only have twenty percent of our roads, overall roads. Local roads that are within that classification. Plus Highway twenty four and Highway sixty seven as um. Principal arterials and major arterials. So this map is going to be corrected. And then it also shows drainage facilities on here, and we're going to make a second map that speaks to drainage.
So we talked about that before.
Yes, in the final, final, you will see a corrected functional classifications. And a separate drainage.
All those little colors that are orange or whatever you wanna call them. Aren't, don't stand out enough for the, for the purple ones that are there, you can't. And there's, there's ones that got dots, there's ones that are solid, we need to fix.
And those purple ones are not major collectors. So, so I think however they imported the GIS data, it um. Got messed up.
Very good catch.
So we'll fix that in the final, final. And then I've just got two more tabs. Here, I'm gonna move to, okay. The arts and culture group had a couple of tweaks.
Page number?
Uh, let's see.
All you gotta do is give us a page.
Yeah, I know, I'm not exactly sure, I just got this email, so I'm just gonna read it to you. It's, it's in somewhere in the arts and culture. Okay, where Dixon is misspelled, oh good, Ellen, you've. You know, your group looked at this, and then um there's. A reserve, our gallery is also needs a hyphen in it. And then on page one fourteen. Can we actually spell it out? And Christie couldn't be with us tonight, but I told her I'd take notes and let her know. Let's see, one point three point one. Arts and culture objective, one point three. Enhance the sound system, lighting and acoustics in the cultural center. Not following this email very well, Ellen, do you?
You know, I did not print it out, and so I'm not sure.
I show the following as one point three point one, not. So maybe this enhance the sound system is supposed to be an action item. And the objective is different. I'll have to talk to Carolyn Smith. So she was responding and keeping the notes, oh, here we go, if I turn the page over. Okay, for the act objective, it should read. Improve existing facilities and have a collaboration of different versions. Of what could be visions. Let me read it again, so this is the objective one point three. Is improve existing facilities and have a collaboration of different visions. Of what could be.
I think of what could be might, we might need.
Or just drop that off.
Yeah, just improve existing facilities.
And then, then one, the one three comes one, three one, one three one comes one three two.
Yes, yeah. So then the first.
Clarify it, cause this enhances the sound system. Partnership for using the school auditorium, could use one facilitate another provision, so that clarifies as well what was meant by the.
On the next page, one twelve and one thirteen. Does art and historic folks have a brochure that says what the R A N is? Do they have what the Stefan Stefan cabinet is on two thirty East Midland? Because if they don't tell people what they are, they have no idea, all we're doing is pointing them out. Do each of those places have a little? That you can refer to a manual.
Yeah, the table has the address, and then there's the map um that shows the location.
Wants to go around, it's almost like those talking books and say. Wow, what was, what's the Maytag House all about, or the Alderado Casino? And you see a little sign there, and it says number fourteen Alderado in front of it. And then the people, like if a family's doing it, they can read that to figure out what it's all about.
Yeah, so we do have a walking tour map, but in the comp plan, there's the map that.
Driving one too.
The locations.
They can do it in the car.
That's a good idea.
Any of the major national parks you could drive along, you see all the items and that, but I mean, it'd be be simple to do.
I think we do have a driving one to Taylor County, there's something like that in the.
Probably the gold belt tour. The gold belt tour is a driving scenic tour, but it doesn't come through Woodland Park, it goes. It's fluorescent down to Canyon City.
That'd be a project to work on, so they can take their car and drive around, see where it's at, and then read about it.
I just have one last tab on the very last page is the appendices. And so Christie will have the questionnaire results summarized. The um in-person community engagement, existing conditions. Stakeholder summary, and then all the actions will be in a matrix similar to what we had in two thousand ten. So I really just wanted to bring those few things to your attention, and now you have your homework. To review this. By next Wednesday. Hey, good work, I mean, it's really amazing. All the hours that you've put in, the workshops and the subcommittee meetings. It gets come together really.
But I think it's important, probably around here doing is that every ten years, let's figure out, are we on track? What needs to be modified, it's important to do that, otherwise you just leave it go for thirty years.
Well, recall that we would in every summer kind of look at our matrix. And say, what are the planning commission priorities, and I would have you kind of pick out your top eight. And then we'd compile them and send it off to city council as they're thinking about the budget.
And that'll kind of jog their memory a little bit too.
Right, so this is, you know, intended to be a living document. That is looked at by the planning commission on a frequent annual basis. Uh, and that it does not collect dust, I mean, the old.
Have it bound and not just a clip.
Oh, yeah, will, it will be nicely bound, yep, yep, in when we get to the public hearing. Okay, any last?
I think it's good.
Questions or, okay. Then we can take a break until the seven o'clock hearing starts.
There's no way we can go over uh short-term rentals?
Oh, we could, yes, and that will save the report at the end, you bet. Okay, so as you'll recall about a month ago, Jerry Penlin approached the planning commission. With the concern of uh short-term rentals. And these are lodging facilities that are rented for less than thirty days. The city manager asked me to identify the problem. Or disadvantages of unregulated short-term rentals. So I put down seven items that uh range. From, we have approximately a hundred short-term rentals in the community right now. Um, and we have a software package called Lodging Revs. Uh, lodging revenue is short for lodging revenues, and they comb the internet. And identify those units that are being advertised for um vacation rentals. Or other, and uh that was implemented last June. As a result, the city has actually gleaned uh quite a bit of uh lodging tax and sales tax. Uh, because the lodging revs also helps with uh compliance. In terms of sending them letters and contacting the owners. But what uh Mr. Penlin talked about was uh some of the negative impacts to the neighborhoods. With traffic, noise, parking, vandalism, um transience in the neighborhoods. And leaving trash on streets. It also converts permanent housing into short-term rentals. Which affects the overall housing supply in Woodland Park. These are. Well, it competes with the traditional lodging businesses. So creates somewhat of an unfair playing field from a business perspective. We're seeing out-of-state investors who are purchasing homes, converting them to short-term rentals. Uh, and this impacts the um residential character of these neighborhoods. So ultimately, there is some negative impact. Not only look at the disadvantages of unregulated, but also what are the benefits? Benefits is that it does support tourism and brings more people to the area. Who are utilizing the restaurants and shopping. Generates the sales tax and the lodging tax rate. The budget right now is a hundred and sixty-five thousand for twenty twenty-one. I think we're going to exceed that this year. Those funds are earmarked for downtown improvements, beautification, marketing and promotions of the city. And um you know, property owners are able to generate substantial profits. This is a fairly lucrative uh new business in.
That is a tongue-in-cheek slam at it, period. Lucrative profits, excessive this, come on, I know what he's getting at there.
Those are actually my words.
Looking at the heading Sally, what is the benefit or advantages of unregulated S T Rs? Do we need the word unregulated, can we just say what's the benefit or?
I think that's, I think that's right, those benefits exist regulated or unregulated, just perhaps, perhaps size.
Yeah, I can do that, um I just wanted to point out that right now, there is. No approval process or criteria for the short-term rentals in the city. Other than to obtain a business license and to remit your sales tax. So that's why I say they're unregulated.
No, I I think the point, at least when I would have gotten Larry's comment was, it's those advantages, whether they are regulated or not. If you can regulate them, you still get a large share of the benefits.
So the um city manager is discussing this with each of the council members. To see if they have an appetite to move forward with producing some perhaps standards or regulations. In so far, he has only gotten um a head nod to have a conversation. So not necessarily to begin creating, but to first let council have an opportunity to. Digest the pros and cons and have a conversation, and I would like that to be with planning commission as.
We have two council members that will be against us because it. Two council members that will be against us because it affects their livelihood. And that's just a fact of life. So that may be difficult in its raw form such as this.
Yeah, so there, you know, council can consider to do nothing and just continue to. Just have the business license. And call, right.
Regulatory authority.
Or.
I have one a couple of doors down from me.
Or to go to the other extreme, which is, you know, prohibit altogether. Or, you know, is there some sort of happy medium that would still protect the residential? Character of the residential neighborhoods.
I think the problem with owner occupied on the next one for a hundred and eighty-five. That I think would be very, very difficult to get through council. Very difficult.
I think it will be interesting to have a conversation.
That's true.
And see what they're thinking, but that is what Colorado Springs has implemented. Is that if it's, if it's a short-term rental in the residential zoned areas. That it must be owner occupied for at least a little bit more than a half a year for a hundred and eighty-five days.
Isn't part of the definition, or it could, the potential part of definition of short-term rental could be whether or not the owner occupier is present or not. It's a different, it's, it's, it's a different usage to have. So Mrs. O'Leary's boarding house, and she lets a couple of, one or two boarders in versus having the whole facility rented out. So typically, I mean, there's, there's different definitions you can use as to what you're controlling and not controlling. I don't know if any of these, I think Jerry's made that point as well. He noted that as well, but that might affect how. What kind of regulation you have. If somebody's, if somebody's in the house at all, maybe it's just not a short-term, it's just not as simple as a short-term rental.
And don't confuse it with boarding for more than a month. Because that's renting rooms or renting a whole house to some family or person for a long term. And we can have in our community up to five unrelated people. Living in a dwelling unit that is defined as a family. So five unrelated people as a family can reside within a single-family house.
The problem, the problem that happens is the more. Regulations you put in this agreement, whatever, whoever does it. That's more of city time and more code enforcement and more everybody. And what's the cost? To figure out, to make sure somebody goes wrong and polices that and it gets done. That's, that's gonna be an expense.
And that's exactly the last section in this is, how is it administered?
If the citizens don't find the problem, then, then there's, there's no point regulating in the first place. So it's. It have to, there has to be some perception that there's a need for some level of regulation, which is addressing exactly your point.
In the case of Ellen, she had a. A problem.
Well, they're, they're just, I was underage drinking and a big, a party and lots of folks and the police. Someone called the police and I just saw lights on and. But calling the police, you know, is what should help and break it up and noise ordinances and things like that. Should be helpful.
And that could happen even with a permanent owner. Right, so, so anyway, stay tuned and we will probably schedule a work session.
I'm not being negative. I'm just saying there's a lot of stuff that's involved to make that thing work. Now we'll take a break for seven minutes. Everybody agree with that? We will return here at seven o'clock. Thank you.
We'll now start the regular meeting of the Woodland Park Planning Commission of September twenty-third.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. John DeBeau.
Here.
Ken Hartsfield.
Here.
Lee Brown.
Yes.
Al Bunky is absent, excused absent. Ellen Carrick.
Yeah.
And Larry Larson.
Here.
We do have a quorum this evening.
Okay, do we have any corrections, deletions, changes to the minutes of July twenty-second? Our, our previous one, anybody? If you hear that and I ask that we approve the minutes of the twenty seconds, all those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
It passed. Okay, we're gonna get into public hearings and we're gonna remind you of ex parte communication. And all those good kind of things that we talk about that we're not supposed to do. Okay, the first one on the agenda is, I may, is Z O N twenty twenty-one dash zero eight. Consider request by Woodland Park Community Church applicant and property owner to rezone from suburban residential. To community commercial to continue preschool use on Lot Two, Parkview Estates, filing two. Eight hundred Valley View Drive in the, in the suburban residential, that's our zone. It is quasi-judicial and city council public hearing seven o'clock tonight. So. At this point in time, we'll start with the staff's presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll take this one. And to begin, orient you. In terms of the location of eight hundred Valley View Drive for the Woodland Park Community Church. Is located in the northern portion of Woodland Park on Valley View Drive where the red star is shown. And. Here is an aerial that includes the church facility, which has the white roof. That's actually their gymnasium. And then the church is a fairly large footprint here. On. Five, almost five and a half acres. The Loy Gulch flood plain goes through this area. The floodway is out in toward the ditch and the parking lot. And then there is a flood fringe for the hundred-year storm. And the five-hundred-year storm is the gold area. They did receive a flood hazard development permit. Back in nineteen ninety-four, which is the year that this building was approved and was constructed. Here is the zoning map. The current zoning map shows this property. As residential, suburban residential. However, when it was constructed in nineteen ninety-four, this was zoned C-two or commercial. And then when the overhaul of the city zoning regulations took place in nineteen ninety-seven. It was changed to residential. So surrounding this location, the yellow is also single-family residential. But right next door to the west is the Jamestown Square Office Building. And it is zoned community commercial. So it has an adjacent property with community commercial, and this property is also owned by. The Woodland Park Community Church. And then further west is the multifamily project. Both the Valley View Apartments and the New Habitat for Humanity Project. Is shown in brown. And so those, that property was actually also zoned commercial, but was. Changed to multifamily in nineteen ninety-nine. So there have been some modifications in this area. And the reason for the request to zone to community commercial. Is that the church operates a daycare and a childcare facility. Of many kiddos cannot operate in a residential zone. Only small home daycares. So this came to the staff's attention. When they, the church had applied for a building permit to modify their classroom walls. And it was, oh gee, this is not zoned appropriately for a. For a daycare. So we suggested that they seek a rezoning to community commercial. Here is a photo of the church and their classroom portion is. On their east wing, which is adjacent to a playground area as well. They have been operating a preschool and daycare since about two thousand. But it just didn't surface until recently. There is ample parking and facilities to support the daycare. And the church facilities. This is in your staff report, which compares suburban residential with community commercial. And a place of worship is allowed in any zone currently. With a conditional use permit, but under the C-two in nineteen ninety-four, they were able to. Build the place of worship in the C-two zone without a conditional use permit. Under the old regulations. And then community commercial allows for a childcare center as well as a place of worship. So we use about four different criteria to evaluate the appropriateness of a rezoning. And the first thing we look at is the comprehensive plan from two thousand and ten. And this site was slated or. Consist or planned for residential, but that was primarily because of the underlying zone of residential. However, we're going through a comprehensive plan update right now, and the map can be easily changed. To commercial with the update of the twenty thirty comprehensive plan. Next question is, is it? The next question is, is the proposed zoning community commercial consistent with the comprehensive plan goals and objectives? Yes, in the 2010, we can point to community well-being goal number two that speaks to Woodland Park shift of population demographics and maintaining a reputation as a child-friendly community. The education objective 1.1 ensures that a diverse range of learning opportunities is accessible and available for residents, businesses of all ages. And then our current update 2030 also has a goal, education goal that Woodland Park values, supports and invests in local education systems as essential instruments in community development. And there are probably many other references that would support families who are in need of quality childcare. Third question is have changes occurred in the surrounding properties that warrant a change in the zoning classification? Staff believes there have been changes. And I reviewed some of the surrounding uses, but most of those surrounding uses are currently being built out with the last property that Habitat is building on with higher density multifamily units. There is a demand for high-quality daycare, which is a pressing need and supports this zoning change. And that the site has been a place of worship and operated preschool since 2000. Next question is the CC zone appropriate at this location? Staff believes it is, especially since it was originally commercial in 1994 when the church was developed. The church essentially is more of a commercial use. And the surrounding multifamily and single-family is compatible with church services and a childcare center. The last two questions deal with services, utility services. And this is a fairly unique situation with the church because their water is supplied by the Teller County Water and Sanitation District. Staff refers to that as the Paint Pony District. And it's primarily because prior to the church being developed in 1994, this was not annexed into the city. It was on, there was the Williams Restaurant that already had a water tap and a sewer tap. So the church just assumed that previous uses, water and sewer taps. So this facility is serviced with water from the sanitation district. And the city has an agreement with the sanitation district to treat the wastewater. So it's a little confusing. It's a property in the city but is on the district, special district utilities. However, to make it even more complicated, the fire protection, all the new fire hydrants that went in around this building are actually on city water. So, but it functions just fine. And the most important thing is that the services are adequate for the existing church and the daycare. And that the zoning change has no net effect on water usage. And then also our wastewater treatment plant was expanded, which can serve up to a population of 14,010. So there is ample capacity for the treatment of the sanitation portion. With that, staff recommends approval of the zoning change from suburban residential to community commercial for this property on Valley View Drive. And there are representatives here, Jim from the church and Mr. Butterey. So we're available for questions.
At this point, we want to hold our questions till after the applicant's presentation. Do you folks want to make a presentation on this?
Okay.
Do we need to open the public hearing or is that already open?
It's open. Yes.
My name is Jim Vander. I'm the executive pastor at Community Church and I have to be dated by our, who is our elder chair for the church. We were unaware that there was zoning issues. We applied for the permit because we're actually attempting to expand our childcare capacity in especially the youngest ages, which is where Teller County has the least facilities that are equipped to handle children ages, birth to two and a half. And so the permit was really just to modify some internal structure to increase our capacity. And then when we found out we had a zoning issue, we've continued to operate under our existing learning center parameters, but attempted to get this taken care of as quickly as we could. So I think that's all I have to say. You have any questions for me?
Anybody have any questions at this point? Okay, no questions.
Okay.
Okay, at this point then we will open for public comment. Do we have anybody signed up? We have nobody signed up. Does anybody in the audience want to make any comments? She certainly can do that if you want to.
Mr. Chairman, we do have one, two, three.
My next question, anybody online?
Has their hand up.
Can't hear you.
Hi, this is Mark Lucas and I'm an adjacent neighbor to the church and the preschool. And my question is, what is the current capacity of the school, of the preschool?
Without the mild or the moderate internal changes, it's about 75 students. This should change us to be able to take up to 90.
Fantastic. Thank you for answering the question. And I am in favor of the rezoning for this school.
Thank you, Mark. Anybody else? Laura, anybody? Nobody else? Okay, we'll close public comment. We don't really need a rebuttal from the applicant. So any final questions anybody would like to ask?
Sally, is there any other zoning that would allow for a childcare of this type?
Um. If it were zoned, let me check the matrix. We chose community commercial because of the adjacent community commercial. And it's always best to try to not what's called spot zoning and take one parcel and make it a unique zone. So having the community commercial was a benefit to allow for that zoning.
So was that adjacent community commercial or spot zoning?
No, it was leftover from the result because the multifamily took the community commercial out in 1999. It left that one parcel zoned community commercial. Does that make sense? So I just wanted to check the matrix for so it could not be neighborhood commercial or central business district or service commercial. Otherwise, that would have been spot zoning.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Just comment really as much as another question and Ken may have been alluding to it too. It's what does give me something, what gives me no pause at all is allowing the daycare, which seems an appropriate use and have been ongoing to continue doing it. What I, the area that does cause me to be concerned was looking for all the other things that have now become allowed as a matter of right. Basically, a generalized shopping district of a sort that may, that would be of a different character if the church were no longer to operate in that location as a church. So if there were some other use that would focus more on daycare, since that's all discussion about the purpose and the objective we're trying to accomplish, I'd like to go there. The net result though, I think since it doesn't seem to be a good fit otherwise, I would be prepared to support this, particularly because of the history of it. Essentially, the commercial use that somehow got removed from the church's potential uses without ever perhaps being really understood at the time. And with that involved, that really, with that history, I'd be equivalent greatly to try and say that the community commercial doesn't work for what the intended use is for which I have no reason to think won't continue on for a lot, for many years. I expect the church is probably not going to move either. So these are my concerns, but I think the net result of this is a good use. And it sounds like this is the right way to do it, even if it's not laser focused on the exact purpose requested.
We're trying to change something that was not fixed 18 years ago. That was our fault, not yours. And that's about alignment. And if you want to look into it, you could probably throw reloupe into the question as well. But anyway, she'll disagree with me on that. At this point, we'd encourage a motion in a second.
There we go.
All right. I moved that we approved the zone change from suburban residential to community commercial for the 5.41 acre site with the legal description of Lot 2, Park Valley Estates filing two, also known as 500 Valley View Drive.
That's actually 800 Valley View Drive.
I'd second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. We call for the question.
Yes. Hartsfield.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Carrick.
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
And DeBeau.
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously and this moves forward to the city council agenda on October 7th with the first reading and October 21st will be your last and final public hearing.
Good luck to you. Thanks. Okay, at this point, we'll go on to item B, which is CUP 2021-02. Consider a request by Stuffed Food Emporium applicant and High Country Real Estate Holdings LLC property owner for a conditional use permit for a restaurant use on Lot 2, Morning Sun Business Park, 100 Morning Sun Drive in the neighborhood commercial NC zone and it's quasi judicial. So Sally, you're up again.
Actually, Laura is taking care of the next two.
Oh.
From the back of the room. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a planning commission meeting, September 23rd, 2021 for CUP 2021-02.
Laura, you need a little more volume.
I need more volume?
Volume. Turn your mic up a little bit.
Okay, is that better?
Excellent.
Stuffed Food Emporium. It's to consider a conditional use permit for a traditional family restaurant use pursuant to municipal code, section 1809090P2. Location is 100 Morning Sun Drive. It's Lot 2, Morning Sun Business Park. Shown in a red dot on the image to the right in the southern corner of the city of Woodland Park. The current zoning on this parcel is NC Neighborhood Commercial. The applicant, Stuffed Food Emporium, is here tonight and will be speaking on this topic. The landowner is High Country Real Estate Holdings LLC. The owner of the land is Pete Labarre. The hearing tonight is for the planning commission to make a recommendation on the conditional use permit application. And then it will follow to the city council for first reading. And on October 7th and October 21st will be the public hearing in front of city council on this item. So the subject site is surrounded by other commercial and office retail uses. The site is shown in red here. To the south is a vacant lot. To the north are business office uses. To the west is the highway and Walmart. And to the north is a proposed residential development, Sun Valley Park immediately to north of that and residential to the far east. On the left is an aerial photo showing the site and some of the developed buildings around it. Office and retail buildings, the highway. And then this is the zoning map for the property. So you can see that the entire strip, including the property, is zoned neighborhood commercial. To the north is multifamily. Sun Valley Park is public lands. There's a commercial strip, community commercial here immediately to the north of Morning Sun Drive. And then Walmart is the PUD Zone District. So this gives you a bigger aerial photo showing the site right here, labeled 100 Morning Sun Drive and the former Denny's building. You see the highway and the Walmart Shopping Center and the Woodland Mobile Home Park here to the north. This is a hard image to see, but this gives you the facade facing the highway and the front door of what was the former Denny's building. This is a site plan showing the building location itself and all of the surrounding site, which is parking lot for this proposed restaurant. This is the Denny's seating arrangement inside, which will be identical for Stuffed Food Emporium. It will be a sit-down restaurant with a bar service. And they don't propose to change much of the seating arrangement, the kitchen arrangement. These are the facades for the building for the Denny's when that was proposed to be a Denny's. And there are no changes proposed to the exterior of the building. So staff did a complete review and analysis. We did send out the application for a conditional use permit for restaurant use to the utilities department, public works department and the building department. We also sent it out to external agencies, including the Northeast Telecandy Fire Protection District, I R E A, which is now Core, Black Hills, TDS, CDOT and Century Link. And no concerns were expressed with this potential restaurant use. We also did adjacent property owner notices to everyone within, every property owner within 150 feet of the site. We did an onsite poster and tonight's hearing and the subsequent city council hearings will be published in the Courier. The zone, as I mentioned earlier, is the neighborhood commercial zone. The neighborhood commercial zone is intended to provide suitable locations for general retail. And you can see when you get into the specifics, a restaurant use is a conditional use in the neighborhood commercial zone district. And within the neighborhood commercial zone district, there are many limitations as you would see in many other zones, like the height, the front yard, the frontage, parking, fencing signs, sidewalk and landscaping. All of these are existing conditions. There are no changes proposed or necessary to parking, for instance, or to the setbacks or to the height, since these are all existing facilities and structures. So staff looks at this application for a conditional use permit with 11 criteria. So staff looks at this application for a condition use permit with eleven criteria. Is there a need for this use, this restaurant use in this particular location? And staff does agree that this is a perfect location for a restaurant use and has been a restaurant used as a restaurant in the past. At least on three occasions, the Denny's was the last one. Is there any impact to public health and welfare? Staff does not believe that there is any, that there is adequate parking and that the buildings are all existing and the parking is existing for this use. Will there be any effect to property values? No. As a matter of fact, there should be an increase in property values with the installation of a use into a currently vacant building. Does it harmonize with the surrounding neighborhood? Well, it's been there for quite a while and it is a fairly attractive building. Restaurant use would harmonize with the surrounding uses and the surrounding buildings. Does it comply with city plans? Yes, it complies with numerous goals, policies and objectives in our twenty ten comprehensive plan. I did not do an evaluation for the twenty thirty comprehensive plan, but I'm sure that it would comply with many of those goals, plans and policies as proposed in that document. Staff looked at city regulations and again, as there are no changes, the facility and the structure and the use would comply if approved with all of our city regulations. The traffic, there are no changes. C dot did not recommend any changes to the highway or to Morning Sun based on the traffic that is proposed with this restaurant. And as a matter of fact, the traffic with this new restaurant would be very similar, similar to what was generated with the previous restaurants. So no issues there. No changes to the drainage, water, sewer, wastewater, all, all on city services. No hazards with this new restaurant use and the architectural design. It's existing and there are no changes to any of that. So staff does recommend approval of conditional use permit, CUP twenty twenty one oh two for section eighteen oh nine oh nine oh P two for traditional family restaurant use at one hundred Morning Sun Drive, lot two Morning Sun Business Park, subject to one condition that prior to opening the restaurant, that the applicant submit a water fixture unit count to the utilities department. So we have a baseline for that. And B, that the parking lot is restriped as it has faded over time. That concludes staff's presentation. I believe the applicant would like to make a presentation and I am available for any questions if there are any.
Thank you. At this point, we are looking for the applicant to come up. Name, rank, serial number and all that kind of stuff.
Hello, my name is Michael Anderson. I'm the project coordinator for the remodel of the restaurant to the stuffed food Emporium. This is Pam Decker.
I'm Pam Decker. I'm the general manager.
We brought copies of our, about seventy five percent of our menu. We're still finalizing, but we brought some copies for you guys to see.
Look at them or do I pass them out to you? Would you like, like to take a look? No.
Don't need it. Okay, great. So not much for us to say. I, you know, I live in Divide myself. I have run the food truck version of this restaurant for the owner for three years. I've seen the Denny's location sitting and I felt it would be a great addition to our community. So I mentioned it to him and he has put the deal together with Pete Labarre. And so we're here hoping you guys will support us and give us opportunity. Thank you.
Have you had other locations and running?
This is our first brick and mortar. We've been a successful concession company for four years now. Started in Florida and have operations in Florida, Texas and Colorado.
Springs? Were you ever down in Springs?
We were, yes.
And you had a very, very high rating down there as a restaurant?
Uh, we had a very good success down there, yeah.
We're looking forward to it.
Thank you very much.
Woodland Park citizens are always looking for another place to eat. We'll be there.
Why don't, why don't you tell us your, a couple specialties on the menu?
You know, so the concept is called stuffed and the entire idea is we, we serve everything very large portions and we combine a raise of toppings like our Hawaiian burgers, got pineapples and sliced ham and barbecue sauce and everything is made fresh in house. We hand make all of our hamburger patties. We hand slice all of our steaks from larger cuts in the house to order. So.
What, what is the price range from where to where?
Uh, I mean, we have items as cheap as seven, eight dollars for lunch basket up to twenty five, thirty dollar steak dinners, everything. We are proposing, we did mention to add some video games and entertainment for children in there and we noticed that Pete Labarre and the old Denny's management had supported a lot of the local sports teams. So we're reaching out and looking to do some of the same stuff and give them a home to, to come after their games and so on.
Very good. Anybody have any other questions? This one? If not, thank you.
Okay, thank you. We'll look forward to serving.
Call you back up. We have a public comments. Okay, do we have anybody that's got comments on this? Thank you. Kimberly Butcher? Your location, please, and all that other kind of good stuff.
My name is Kimberly Butcher and I am a resident of Morning Sun Solar Community. I can tell you I never received notice of the hearing. The way that I found it out, and I am the closest residential lot to the intersection. The way I found it out was the public hearing notification on the stick. The piece of paper was in the grass and I picked it up and read it. Since then, I've tried to re-lean it up against the paint stick kind of situation that's up there. And it was gone today. The entire paper was missing. I think that's a really failed attempt at notifying the community. So I did not ever receive a handwritten or telephone notification of this hearing or anything about this restaurant.
Once you found that thing, did you contact the city?
Um, I did come in and I had a question for one of the employees about it. I didn't mention that it was missing because I didn't find that out until four forty five this afternoon. So anyway, I have a lot that I'm going to say. If you'd like a copy of what I'm going to say, I'm more than happy to provide you with that. I do have a couple illustrations I'd like to approach with, if that's okay with you.
What do you want to?
They are illustrations on cross advertising is what they are. Would you like to see them?
Which if you hand them to sell.
Sure. It's just pass it down the line. I think, thanks. I didn't know how many of you were on the commission. While you look at those, I've got the important parts kind of circled in red. If you want to take a look at those, it's what's concerning to me. Okay, I ask you, planning department, what specifically are the conditions of the conditional permit? Why is it considered a conditional permit when a restaurant permit expires after twelve months of it being vacant? It's my understanding. Why is this not being considered as a change in use permit? What are the consequences of failing to adhere to the conditions of the permit if the permit and zoning ordinances are breached? State specifically, if you breach this, then what will happen? This will need to be written in a contract with the city. There are several public record issues where permits have been breached and no consequences have been seen. There is no accountability. Businesses are approved without considering consequences. The city is fine with adding businesses, but not thinking about future issues. Conditional use is a condition upon what is set forth by the neighborhood in which it resides. For the ordinance, why wasn't I notified by mail or phone? Now I can assume the entire neighborhood is still in the dark about this proposed restaurant. The sign in front of the proposed lot was put up on Monday, the twentieth. For the entire week, the sign has been based down in the grass. Is this the best the planning department can do in notifying residents? The sign is currently missing. As I drive through town, I see struggling businesses. The operating hours on the windows are different than those prior to COVID. Local businesses have help wanted or hiring now signs posted with the new hours due to several issues, one being retention of employees. How is adding another restaurant in town going to affect the existing struggling restaurants? Why is this specific location being considered for this type of restaurant that contains a lounge and bar area? This is a neighborhood commercial location. We are not speaking of downtown Woodland Park Business District where a bar can be open until four AM. What are the operating hours? It's not in the letter. The current operating hours of the food truck are Tuesday through Thursday, four PM to one AM and Friday and Saturday, two PM to four AM. How are these hours going to differ from the current food truck hours? If you look at the organization of this town, the restaurants and bars are in and around shopping encased by businesses on city blocks. This location does not hold that appeal. There are no residences within one city block of each restaurant downtown, except for the proposed restaurant in my neighborhood. Ask yourself, would I want to live next door to a sports bar or lounge? Additionally, I question the unspoken intentions of this restaurant. As I look at the proposed layout of the interior, it appears to have a separate entrance for lounge and bar. Ask yourselves why? Why does it need a separate lounge entrance? I asked a city hall employee about stuffed foods Emporium not having any idea what it was. I was told to Google it. The results from the Google search engine, an association to Snooty Fox Gentlemen's Club in Colorado Springs. The food truck stuffed food Emporium shares the same address as the Snooty Fox. The two businesses also cross advertise. If this does not speak association, I don't know what does. During my search, I came upon the question of whether or not this applicant intends to open a restaurant or a gentleman's club. I found such public comments as the girls aren't the only beautiful thing at Snooty Fox. Come get a prime rib filly cheesesteak from stuffed food truck till four AM. Also try a steakhouse burger at Snooty Fox's done in, which I believe is supposed to say dine in with the beautiful ladies. Another post says on Anne Poppin and the Snooty Fox, come get some great food and drinks and warm up with the beautiful ladies. These comments lead me to believe that after the approval of the restaurant, it will quickly become a gentleman's club. For reference, I have printed copies of the direct association of the food truck to the gentleman's club. When Googling the stuffed food truck Emporium, under the name it lists adult entertainment and food trucks. Why is the city considering this? These are advertisements with naked women on them. The webpage URL has both the Snooty Fox and the stuffed Emporium listed. Please see photos. There is no clarity in the letter from the applicant to the mayor and city council included in the packet for tonight's meeting. The applicant suggests unique and wonderful, but does not include the arcade games I was told would be located in the restaurant. What exactly are wonderful and unique options for the patrons? What is not being said right now about this restaurant? What I am concerned about are the unseen, unaddressed issues. What are the situations we are going to encounter after possible approval? What exactly is the relationship between the gentleman's club and the stuffed food Emporium? What I consider unique is Hungry Bear. The bears that line the walls in the entryway. What I see as wonderful is Murph at the youth restaurant that has amazing camaraderie with the military. The camaraderie at the youth is and always will be unmatched. My concern is that the applicant gets a restaurant up and going on the conditional permit, however, decides to change major operating factors. What I'm concerned about is the promise of safe that disappears when the bar and lounge stay openly, sell alcohol and discuss, disrupt our quiet neighborhood. This is not a promise of a safe environment. I'm concerned about this kind of attraction in our town. Will only attract those who ask for trouble. This is not a question of the footprint of the building. This is a question of the use. Just because this applicant request, applicant's request fits the mold of the previously approved Denny's does not mean it should continue in the footsteps of failed attempts at a restaurant in my neighborhood. If the attempts had not been successful previously, why is this one even being considered? Clearly, this is not a good location for a restaurant. The conditional use has to implement, has to complement the existing neighborhood. This restaurant is not going to, a gentleman's club is not going to. This is an issue of peaceful enjoyment of owner property. Neighborhood commercial restaurants are not okay. Have you considered the situation in which the letter from the applicant states they do not expect parking to be an issue as it wasn't an issue for Denny's? Where is Denny's? It's no longer in business. As an entrepreneur, I would hope they would consider where extra parking would be if they think themselves as wonderfully unique. I would think they should plan as they would have parking issues. The dental group next door to the proposed location is constantly busy during the day and could safely assume they would not want restaurant patrons using their parking spaces for forty five minutes to an hour. Additionally, I asked the committee to review traffic issues. This will cause the previously approved Brecken Heights has an entrance with currently unknown future signage that will potentially add an additional sixty four drivers through the intersection at any given time. In the past year, the intersection of Morning Sun Drive and Highway twenty four has seen three fatalities due to traffic accidents. Currently, the pull in and pull out drives of the proposed location are a blind corner for residents residing in the Morning Sun Solar Community. What is the occupancy and how many cars does that translate into for this applicant? Depending on the success of this restaurant, I would deeply consider how much traffic would be moving into the Morning Sun Solar Community. Residing in the neighborhood, I can attest to the speed limit not being followed and the yield signs less than sufficient for control of the Sun Valley Drive Morning Sun Intersection. There will be additional traffic through the neighborhood going to and from the restaurant when Highway twenty four is frozen from traffic accidents. I asked the committees tonight to consider developing a food truck eating area instead. Utilize the empty space south of the Old Pike's Peak tram to allow several food truck parking area. The picnic tables are already there with Amberl parking south of Do It Best. This could allow businesses and tourists a variety of food items right in the middle of town with more opportunities to bring in specialty foods without having permanent damage to local restaurants. The usable parking area for the food truck lot would allow ample parking for campers and trailers. Where are these campers and trailers going to be parked if tourists went to patron the applicant's restaurant? It seems as though stuffed food Emporium was somewhat successful at the gentleman's club. Keep the food truck there and let go of the restaurant idea. Another issue that concerns me is the fact that the food truck is not currently serving food. What happened? Why isn't it serving out of the truck? I urge the citizens of Woodland Park to support the current restaurants and grow our small community in that way. Please reconsider this proposal and rezone the restaurant to an office building or leave it empty. The offices in the neighborhood are thriving and retain the peace and quiet. Thank you.
Thank you. Laura, do we have anybody else on public comment?
Mr. Chairman, we do not. And I ask that anyone online that wishes to speak, please raise your hand. And no one is raising their hand.
Okay, at this point, we'll close, close the public comment and rebuttal from applicant. Would you like to come up and address some of these things that she's accused you of?
Okay, so first I want to clarify the relationship between us and a client of ours. The Snooty Fox was a client of the catering company who hired us to put the food truck outside and supply food to its patrons, which we did. We had no association with the ownership of the Snooty Fox Gentlemen's Club. We have no involvement further than providing food to the patrons from outside the parking lot. In addition to that, it was something that the owner had great interest in providing safety to the patrons in the Snooty Fox because they had been leaving at an hour where there were no food options. And so he reached out to us looking for someone that was willing to provide food till four AM, which is why you saw the ludicrous hours, which I personally stood in the parking lot at zero degrees till four AM serving those guests. We, we did so, we were successful. We, we would have been successful outside of any venue that had patrons that needed food because we provide good food. So that's why we were successful. The advertising was done by the Snooty Fox. We co-put some of it on our Instagram page because we want to let our patrons know where we're located, who want to know where we were. We had been randomly parking in the springs before we were contracted for that location. So that was our only involvement with that. There is absolutely no intention of involving indecently dressed women or any type of adult entertainment whatsoever other than some Sunday football. We, we would like to show some Sunday football. But other than that, there's really no plan for adult entertainment. The video games being put in, for example, are like Ninja Turtles, Spider-Man, you know, these are children's games that are being put in. Our goal is to, I have a child, she's five years old. There's limited, we, we love living here. We take her outside. We enjoy all the hiking. That's why we live here. But to take her out or have a birthday party or do anything of any magnitude, we have to go down to the springs. The, the options up here are very limited. And so this is why I proposed to the owner of the food truck that we take our brand and put it into a restaurant. So we have every intention on providing something for families. The experience will be for families. That's not going to change. Our hours are not what you were concerned with at all. We will be cut, shutting down at ten o'clock during the week. We're considering eleven on Friday and Saturday night. That's the latest. We would stay open. So, and that's what we're considering. I don't really know what else to say. A lot of the things she was concerned with seemed like city issues and signage and, and stuff like that. So I'm not sure how to address it, but any recommendations that the council or, or citizens have for how we should address traffic, we're open to consideration, absolutely. But I can assure you, ma'am, that there will be no indecent involvement whatsoever. So.
Thanks.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
What sort of food truck operations would be supported from this, if any? Would your food trucks cooperate from there or is it?
No, so the food truck is. No, so the food truck is parked out there right now, basically as an average. Oh, and I will also answer why we've been, so we shut down for COVID. We were open until the day the shutdown occurred last year. And then the Snooty Fox, in order for them to continue operating, had to have their own food. Because if you, if you didn't sell food, you couldn't sell alcohol. So they kicked us out of our contract, put their own kitchen in, and we lost our, you know, business that we had. And so we remained closed during the shutdown. And then we're involved with Pete LeBarre since last October, working on this deal. So just haven't had the staffing to reopen the food truck.
I understand because it's a sit-down restaurant. Additional use, not, not a food truck.
No, no, I have no intention on keeping the food truck there. It's parked there right now like a sign that just says an advertising, hey, what's going on over there? You know, restaurant's coming. But the food truck itself will be heading back down to the Springs. There is no further involvement with, with Snooty Fox. We have removed everything online that connects us to Snooty Fox. Because obviously, as a family restaurant, we don't want that connection either. We should have thought about that earlier, but we didn't. But, you know, like I said, there was no connection. There is no connection. The ownerships are completely independent and we just had a contract with them to supply food. That was it.
Commissioners, have any final comments for the applicant, for questions? Thank you.
Thank you, folks.
At this point, we'll begin final deliberation. Anybody want to talk about things going on with this?
Question for staff. Just the parking situation since it's raised. They have the appropriate ratio of parking to square footage and occupants.
Yes. Yes, with the original approval of the first restaurant, the standards have not changed. And there is adequate parking, which is one space for every four seats or one space for every one hundred square feet, whichever is greater of dining area. So yes, the parking is adequate.
Anything else, Ken?
I just want to touch base that adult entertainment is basically prohibited by ordinance in this town. So anything that effort to do that would certainly be shut down in violation of code.
Actually, there is an allowance for adult education, but it is very constricted to the industrial zone.
And where is that in town?
We have a small area on the south, very south end of town and a very small area toward the north end of town.
And to reinforce what Ken just said, I assume that the application law was submitted for a traditional family restaurant use and no other uses. Okay, thank you.
And then I'd like to address Ms. Butcher's notification comments. And so the municipal code is very specific that we notify by letter those properties that are within a hundred and fifty feet of the subject property. So your residential use is probably outside that area. However, the signage, the posters is usually how people do see that there is something going on there. And we will certainly create a new one and get it posted as soon as possible for the upcoming hearing with the city council. The most important notice of all is the one that is published in the newspaper. Although many people don't read the public notices, it's not the most convenient for most people. That is the main legal requirement for notifications.
Thank you. At this point, anything else you want to talk about? Do you want to look at a motion in a second? What's your, what's your choice?
Well, we've had a successful, well, maybe not business-wise, but I think there was well-received restaurant usage at the site. And I don't believe there have been any negative, major negative impacts from that usage. It sounds like this is a continuation or not a continuation, but a similar use that's been done in the past. Traffic patterns into the community, I think, are somewhat limited because most people are coming to and from twenty-four to get to the property. Just the regular neighborhood traffic would be flowing from uphill into the restaurants. I don't see that as a major concern. So I would support this request. And I think a traditional restaurant in town should have the opportunity to succeed.
So you're making a motion to?
I did not make a motion.
Oh, you didn't make a motion. Are you going to?
I don't know if anybody else had comment.
Anybody else have any comments?
You're, you're public, it's over with. You can do that at council.
Listening to the comments that maybe I, I think as a point Ken was making, this long, long usage of this property as a restaurant, which started constructed for continue a new use restarting the restaurant use with very little change in the building, suggests it's an appropriate kind of use. Among the negative things I do have some concern about is traffic in the area. Particularly, it's, it's kind of a, it's perhaps not a well-laid out design where road comes at ninety degrees to twenty-four with a light, then almost ninety and almost ninety again, sort of the S-shaped pattern front as it goes around a couple of buildings and the restaurant feeding into that, into that S shape. Any, any use there is going to generate that potential sort of problem. It's something the city, we may find there's some issues we have to look at in the future about that. But this is a property zone, you know, zone for a neighborhood commercial. They're entitled to run a business, generate some cars there. As I say, we need to watch, particularly the multifamily lane on the other side, feed the other side of the street. But I don't think the potential for a problem there is sufficient to change the general view. This looks like to me like an appropriate use of that renewed use of that property.
Are you going to make a motion? You don't have to.
I want to get other people's kind of comment and identify their concerns, if any.
I certainly think that this building, I guess, did it start off as an auto shop?
Yes.
City auto. City auto. But since then, it has been a restaurant for a number of years. And this really sounds like it's going to be a family restaurant with hours that are compatible, ten or eleven o'clock for closing. And hopefully, most of those lights go the opposite way when they're leaving and not into the neighborhood. I think it seems like an appropriate use.
My only comment is I agree with my colleagues.
Well, Mr. Chair, you'd allow me, I'd like to make a motion to approve CUP twenty twenty-one dash zero-two request by Stuffed Food Emporium for conditional use at one hundred Morning Sun Drive. I'll second that.
Subject to the conditions in the staff report?
Yes.
Okay, we will start with Lee Brown.
Yes.
Ellen Carrick.
Yes.
Larry Larson.
Yes.
John DeBeau.
Yes.
And Ken Hartsfield.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. And if I might just add, Ms. Butcher, if you could call us the staff and meet with the planning department, not with other city employees that may not know what's going on. So please, please do reach out to us. We're happy to meet with you.
Folks, thank you. Thank you for coming. If you look in Wikipedia, that's rated a five-star restaurant in the Springs. So I think they probably got a pretty good shot coming in here. Checked that out a long time ago when I heard the rumor. Okay. Before you applied, but all right. Anything else? Is there anything else, anything else we got on the agenda?
Yes.
Yes.
We got one more, don't we?
One more.
All right. Now we're going to VAC twenty twenty-one dash oh-five. Consider a request by Anthony Longman and Darren Webster after against some property owners to vacate a ninety-foot-long part of the alley, public right-of-way between Lot Four, Block Six, Elm Heights, six forty West Gunnison Avenue and Lot Six, Seven, Block Six, Lake Edition, six oh five North Wallis Street in the urban residential zone quasi-judicial.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will be presenting tonight. And this is the Longman Right-of-Way Vacation for a ninety-foot-long by fifteen-foot-wide part of the alley between Gunnison Avenue and County Road. Located, Mr. Longman is located at the addresses involved are six forty West Gunnison Avenue and six oh five North Walnut Street. Mr. Longman is six forty West Gunnison Avenue. So this is within the urban residential zone district. Mr. Longman is here tonight. I think, I think he's still here. It's over here. And the, tonight, the planning commission will make a recommendation, which will then be sent to city council for first reading on October seventh, and the public hearing is scheduled on October twenty-first. So this is a plat from the late eighteen hundreds showing you the grid that was platted for the city of Woodland Park. The alley that was platted is shown here. It's a fifteen-foot-wide alley for the entire block, similar and typical of what you see in all of the other blocks in the area. They all had alleys, and that's how it was platted in the eighteen nineties. So here is a close-up view. It's a fifteen-foot-wide alley, and each of these lots are fifty feet wide. So it's two hundred and fifty feet long for the entire length of the block. That was the original plat. And then Mr. Longman, who is Lot Four here, was replatted as Elm Heights just recently. I believe it was in the eighties. And you can see that the alley still exists as a fifteen-foot-wide alley for the entire length of the block. But the, the interior lots, instead of being these long fifty-foot-wide narrow lots, are now reconfigured into five lots that you see here. So Lot Four is Mr. Longman's alley. And the alley next to Mr. Longman's alley is the alley that he would like to vacate, which is fifty feet wide by ninety feet long to the corner of his lot. The rest of the alley would remain as a public right-of-way. So this is just the zoning in the area. You can see that it's all urban residential down here. And then north of County Road, it's suburban residential. The Teller County Assessors map and our zoning map even shows the alley as it exists. What's interesting about this graphic is that it shows that many of the alleys surrounding, in the surrounding neighborhood, if you remember what the eighteen ninety plat looked like with all of those alleys in every single block, well, you see today that many of those alleys have disappeared in many of the blocks. Some still remain, but many have disappeared. So the applicant is proposing, as I said earlier, to vacate that portion between his lot and the neighbor to the west. So this is an aerial photo showing the block, the entire Block Six and the alley in red. It also shows the vegetation that exists on these private lots, as well as there is Mr. Longman's house right there at six forty West Gunnison and the other surrounding neighbors and existing development. And this is the residence for the house to the west, Darren's lot. So this is the exhibit that the applicant produced to show the portion of the alley that is to be vacated. Again, fifteen foot by ninety foot long. This is Lot Six and Seven of Block Six of Lake Edition as it originally existed. So it's actually two lots that are owned here. And this is Mr. Longman's lot here. And so parcel A is the portion of the alley that is proposed to be vacated. This is a street view. This is Mr. Longman's house. And his property comes to right about here, which is then the fifteen-foot-wide alley that takes you to the fence, which is Mr. Wester's lot to the west. This is an interesting photograph in that it shows that the driveway is all used by Mr. Longman and is one of the reasons that he wants to vacate this portion of the alley. It is more functional as his driveway to get to his garage here in the back than it is as an alley for access to anyone else. Even Mr. Wester doesn't use this alley. And what you can see, it's hard to see in this photo, but many of the, the alley north of Mr. Longman's lot is blocked by many of the fences that exist for the private property owners to the north. And of course, the city has not gone in to enforce opening up that alley, nor does the city have any desire to use the alley, quite frankly. So staff did a review and analysis of the application to vacate this right-of-way, this small portion of the alley. We did send it out to the utilities department, to the public works department, and to various external agencies. No one had any concerns with this vacation of the alley. We did adjacent property owner notices to everyone within a hundred and fifty feet. We did an onsite poster. And we did publish tonight's hearing and the city council hearings in the Courier. And as I mentioned before, the zone district is urban residential. So Chapter Twelve of the municipal code, twelve point zero eight, deals with vacations of right-of-ways. And there are some criteria that we look at when we have a request for a right-of-way vacation. First of all, the city does have a right to vacate the alley. That's in this section. And we look at it's the effect of the vacation on things like utilities, emergency services, and lot accesses, road construction, traffic, and adjacent owner input. So there are some utilities in this alley, but the city will be preserving any vacated portion as a easement for utilities and for access for us to get there if we do have need to get onto that portion of the alley. Emergency Services does not use the alley at all. And none of the other lots need the alley for access. They are all fronting on public roads. There's no future road construction that will connect to this alley. And there's no traffic that will be impacted if this portion of the alley is vacated. Mr. Longman did solicit adjacent owner input, and he sent out letters to everyone abutting on the alley and asked them if they would like to participate in this vacation request or if they had any concerns with this vacation request. And nobody expressed concerns, but nobody wanted to spend the money to contribute to the vacation request either. So that is why he's here tonight, just vacating that portion that is between him and his neighbor to the west. And if you have any more questions about the the owner input that Mr. Longman did, the letter that he sent out, which was included in the staff report, he is here to answer any questions about his communications with his neighbors. We did send out those adjacent property owner notices and received no concerns from any adjacent property owners. And the poster, no, nobody came in. Nobody is interested in this. Another criteria we look at is vesting. So if successful and vacated, typically seven and a half feet would go to Mr., to the lot to the west, and seven and a half feet would go to the lot to the east. But Mr. Longman has communicated with the owner to the west, and he has no interest in owning an additional seven and a half feet and has decided to give Mr. Longman that seven and a half feet that would typically vest with him. So Mr. Longman is requesting the entire fifteen-foot-wide portion so that he can continue to use it as his driveway to access his lot. And the owner to the west does not object to that. And so the entire fifteen-foot-wide portion would vest with Mr. Longman. We also have a criteria related to utility reservation. And the ordinance that, the draft ordinance that is included in the staff report does reserve that portion that is to be vacated as a fifteen-foot-wide by ninety-foot- portion that is to be vacated as a fifteen-foot wide by ninety-foot long um, easement for both access and utilities, public utilities. So we would still have the right to A, put utilities in there if there should be a need or B, get to those utilities. Uh, and that would apply to other utilities, not just city utilities. The application, uh, the applicant did submit a complete application and staff did receive it. And it is complete and a vacation is required to be done by ordinance. A draft ordinance was produced and was in the staff report and will be moving forward to city council for review. Um, if approved, the ordinance must be recorded with the Teller County Clerk and Recorder and it would be. And then the applicant is subject to the public notification fees and other fees that are associated with a typical application. So staff does recommend approval of this vacation to vacate that one thousand three hundred and fifty square foot park, square feet part known as parcel A of the public right-of-way alley between Gunnison Avenue and County Road and block six of Lake Edition of the town of Woodland Park as submitted by Mr. Longman, who is the applicant here tonight, subject to one condition. That reservation of a public access and utility easement to the city over the vacated portion is produced. And that has been produced. That completes my report, Mr. Chairman. Um, as I stated, Mr. Longman is here tonight and uh, able to answer any questions, as am I.
Any questions for Laura?
Yes, Laura. Um, on the south side of the road, uh, there's an alleyway and it looks like the utility pool is on the east side of that alley. And I'm just trying to project that to the north where these comes in. But where, where is the property line in relationship to that power pole currently?
It's about fifteen feet from this um, split rail fence. So the property pool is um, just a couple of feet from that fence and then, you know, another couple of feet would be the alley and that would be the property line that Mr. Longman shares with that alley. So roughly fifteen feet from this fence line.
So the fence line is the existing property line of the western property.
Yes, and the western property line of the alley.
Okay, so the entire uh, alley is east of that fence line in the driveway area.
Yes.
Thank you.
Are there any other utilities that run through the alley currently?
There are some utilities. The applicant did submit um, a sketch showing some of the utilities that cross. I think there is um first of all, power. That goes right through that.
Okay, they crossed. They, they use it literally in a linear manner?
Um, yes, it goes up through the alley and I believe Mr. Longman can probably describe some of the utilities better than I can, but yes, his image showed, let me just grab it. And this was attached to the staff report as well. So the power pole um, and the power line goes north-south along the alley, pretty much along the western boundary of the alley and then it turns and goes east, just north of lot four, north of Mr. Longman's property.
That's, alright. The drawing, I did, I don't recall it, is showing something going further north. You did that just around the property?
Yeah. And that's probably a service line to the lot.
Laura, tell me with these um alleys like this, um, does the city have any liabilities? I mean, I, I gather we don't spend a lot of money to deal with them. We don't, we don't keep, and obviously we don't keep them open. I insist that people not fence them and such. Does the city have liabilities from simply having these having these alleys and we don't know what goes on in them? They could have fences falling down. They could have other stuff. Is there any liability from the city, like keeping, keeping the alley?
No, I don't believe there would be any liability to keep the alley. Um, I mean, I, I think it might be prudent to uh, ensure that there are no encroachments in the alley. But we don't um, need this alley and that's why we haven't really pursued any kind of uh, removal. We have in other circumstances or situations, but this is public land and um I don't believe there's any more liability on an alley compared to a road.
Alright, um, an observation, this relates to the, you're, at the very end of your presentation, you had a proposed resolution. I wonder if that's satisfactory. First noted, as you noted, by city ordinance, when when an alley is vacated, the land goes half to each side. Um, I'm not sure there's any a- any clear, clear manner provided in the law to not have it do that. But as, because we're a small city, we want to help out, yeah, we'll, you know, instead of giving it two pieces and then making them making Mr. Wester give it, you know, give his back, we'll just simplify it. If that's the case though, shouldn't our recommendation say to vacate approval and somehow identify the fact that we're all giving it over to one of the property owners? Because simply doing that just says um, you know, we may have heard that story, but the r- the resolution doesn't reflect the fact that we're moving the land the ownership of, of this vacated land contrary to the ordinance.
That's a very good suggestion, Commissioner Brown, and I would suggest that condition number two be that the uh, entire vacated alley vast entirely with Mr. Longman.
You stated that the, the other party on the other side of that western half is already said fine.
Yes.
Why don't we just get that in writing so we can put it as part of the document?
In writing, it was with the staff report.
Already got it in writing.
Yeah, but Mr. Commissioner Brown makes a really great suggestion to add it as a condition, so it's very clear.
Very good. I think that answers Mr. Brown's question too. Alright, at this point in time, I don't think we need a public comment opened up. Is there anybody signed up? I don't think so. There's nobody left unless you want to talk about it. Okay, we'll close the public comment. There's really not a lot for you to rebuttal from, but if you want to get up and talk, you're more than welcome to do it.
I, I don't kind of need to get up.
Okay. Do you want to poll the uh, the commission again? Everybody talk about this.
Well, it wasn't my intent last time. I just wanted the opportunity for us to be able to express ourselves.
Okay.
I was just making my own comment.
I didn't think there were actually rules that we had to pull. But anyhow, I'm looking for a motion in a second.
I'll recommend that the planning commission approve, approval of VAC twenty twenty-one dash zero five to vacate that one hundred, or one thousand three hundred and fifty square foot part, parcel A of the public right-of-way between Gunnison Avenue and County Road in block six, Lake Edition to the town of Woodland Park as submitted by Mr. Longman. Applicant substitute the following conditions. Number one, reservation of the public access and utility easement to the city over the vacated portion, parcel A. And the new condition, uh, number two, uh, to, to uh, to, to have in writing the recording of the transfer of the property, of investing in the property of the west side of the easement. Both, both to Mr. Longmire.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
Okay. If we have a second?
Second.
Have to make sure.
Okay, for the roll call, um, Ms. Carrick.
Yes.
Mr. Larson.
Yes.
Mr. DeVoe.
Yes.
Mr. Hartfield, Field, Hartsfield.
Yes.
And Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
The only question is, are they gonna move that telephone that phone was right in the middle of all that stuff or whatever that is?
No, they don't have to move it. He gave them, they've got any
Okay. Maybe you go on the other side of it now that you've got there as well. Okay, thank you. Thanks, everybody. Now, at this point, we are at uh, reports.
I have one report, which I'm very saddened to report that we are um losing our city planner, Laura Pellegrino, and she is moving uh, out of the area and tomorrow is her last day in the planning office. So we really appreciate her seven years with uh, the city and the planning department and her um, efforts in being a great planner are exhibited in a number of the projects that she has overseen over the last seven years, including the Goodwill and Natural Grocers and a number of subdivisions. So I want to thank Laura for um, the past.
There she are. Now, up to thirty minutes for a speech? Okay, anything else for the good of our group?
Yeah.
Motion adjourned.
Out of here.
Second.
All those in favor? We're adjourned.